Are you on schedule? Yeah, both of them.
All right, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Epsom County Planning Commission for September 11th, 2023. Thank you. Can I get a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Pitts?
Yes, sir.
Chair McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Here.
Vice Chair Carlson?
Here.
Mr. Murk?
Here.
We have four Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is the adoption of the meeting minutes for the August 14th meeting. Do I have any comments, changes, or a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous, thank you.
Yes. All right. Item three, old business. Application for R U Z 2023-02, George L. Crook, 103 Bank Street, 12 lots, parcels number 070A, 28 through 39, and 44. Public hearing for this was continued from our last meeting. I know that we had asked Mr. Crook to provide some additional information. I believe this is what you had provided, and I think Doug, you've had provided some additional pictures.
Right. I'd be able to show those during my presentation.
Okay. First off, Mr. Crook, do you have anything additional you'd like to? Would you like to go over this, or do you have anything additional you want to?
Well, I think that's very self-explanatory. I did the measurements where the building was. It is over 200 feet away from the property line. I did go from a corner post. I did not do a line of sight.
Okay.
There's sufficient evidence that we're putting well over 200 feet away from the property line. And the other property line, nope, that was the R5.
Okay. And this is the 243?
243 feet goes to the fence that is around the chicken coop. And then it's 277 feet to the corner of the chicken coop.
Actually, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone have questions while we're looking at this? Okay. All right. Thank you. Next on my list, I'm gonna go down. I know some of these last time were on here from the last meeting, but I'll make sure you don't have anything additional. Michael Chapman? Do you have anything additional you'd like to?
I only think I have just one.
Please, Mr. Chapman, if you would, just come up here. State your name and address for us.
Michael Chapman, 121 Worthy Road. My only concern is with the animals that he wanted back there. If they do any damage to vehicles, because goats love cars. I know you see any one of goats, hogs, and chickens out there?
I don't believe we talked about hogs.
You remember, no, no.
Oh, no hog.
No, the chickens, goats, and what else?
Just chicken and goats?
That's it. That's all the thing I think we talked about.
I thought you said something about some sire or something, some big one.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, but the goats, they love metal. And they'll get on you. The damage that they do with my property, I need to go to them, I'm gonna call the law.
Come to me first.
Yeah, I would go to him first.
I will tell you the situation, then you can get the place involved.
Well, that's my point while bringing that up first. Goats love to get, they love to sound them out, and they'll get up there and they'll bang you to death. And that's my only concern about it, the goats.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Okay, that's fair. I said, I called the deer, and then if they can't get the straight deal, I can go to the law.
That would be a civil.
That would be a civil matter, but.
No, I go, not, no, that would have nothing to do, that'd be the law itself, huh?
Yeah, but I mean, it would be a civil.
Right. But if I talk to you about that, and then all of a sudden it continues to happen, and then.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next one on the list is Tim O'Neil.
Not here.
Not here. Next one is Jacquin Lewis. Are you for the Pickard Road?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think we've got you. Okay, I'm gonna mark you off this one. I think you signed the wrong one. Oh, you're from? Okay. Ricky, no, Ricky Lewis is.
No, they're all from Pickard Road as well, yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Okay, Richard Crook? Do you have any? You don't have anything? Okay. Kristy?
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything? And is it George Crook? That, okay. I didn't know if I had another, had a senior somewhere around here, okay.
I'm the senior.
Okay, all right. Okay, so if that being said, we have no other, no other comments, so do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
In unanimous, thank you.
Okay, so if we can get your presentation with your new pictures.
Certainly. Obviously, this will be a little abbreviated first, especially for the audience that didn't see copy. This is one of the two requirements that you had. One, to show where the chicken house needs to be placed to meet the 200-foot property line setback, and that's the graphic you have there and that we have here. You had not specifically talked about the dump tickets, and I would just hand them, but you have been giving the dump tickets for that pile that you cited, and so we have those unexamined. And then I'll just go back through the photos, and I have some before and afters of the specific piles that are, aren't gone. But I'll go back through the photos, and you'll see the before and afters. This is the neighborhood, the next-door neighbor. And actually, the equipment was moved around this last time I did the inspection. All right, so here's the before. You can see a little bit of debris near that one shed. And there's not a lot of change in this particular slide. Here's another before. See, there's a pile of wood debris sort of between where the red trailer is and the carport? I don't know what you wanna call that. So another before. And here's the after, so you can see most of those pallets were cleaned up. You can see the disturbed earth where that pile hit them. Still have some items there. And then you can see the, through the bushes, that white spot is where the large pile of processed wood was. There it is, before. And here's the after. And there was some debris around the, this trailer. I'm not sure if anything was cleaned up there. And that's it for the photographs, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. Any discussion, any input? Pardon? Okay, do I have a motion, one way or the other?
Madam Chair, there was also reference in the report. You were talking about a 200-foot separation from the chicken house, but you'll see in your packet, there's also the ordinance discussion about the fact there's two other distances in the chicken ordinance, one being the distance from the neighboring house that's not the owner's house, and also distance from property to the zone residential. So those notes are also in your packet.
There was no further staff recommendations, just that?
Nothing new.
Thoughts?
Is there conditions that we need to put in place that we don't think about? Approve it? How many chickens you have on there now?
Right now, we started out with 86. I think we're down to about 56 right now.
56.
We should never have more than 300 at the most, but I just, we'd be lucky if we have 200 out there. I just didn't wanna say we're only gonna have 200 chickens, and then we end up with 240.
And you're taking these eggs elsewhere to sell?
Yes, sir. We don't sell anything off the property.
So Johnny, you were asking about the conditions. You can see on page, starts on page seven of Doug's staff report.
That's why I was at, when you know.
Do you have a buffer right now between yourself and Mr. Worthy? The little Worthy?
Yes, we do.
What do you have?
Trees.
How tall are they?
Some of them are at least 20 foot.
20 foot.
Some of them are 30.
So you, okay, so you own, on this side, you own these one, two, three, four lots?
Yes, ma'am.
But there's people across, in here?
Yes, ma'am.
That live in here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's too hilly to do anything with.
This here, this here?
And the neighbor on the end asked us not to put goats near his house, so.
On this one?
On the other end. Out there.
Okay.
On the corner.
So where is your plan, off of this, where is your plan to have goats?
Everywhere where it's.
In red?
In, I believe so. It's, we're gonna put up a fence over 70% of that.
Are you basically got some market, or you just, what's the purpose of the goat?
We only have two goats right now. The purpose is to clean the property up. It costs too much to move the stuff. There's too many rocks out there to do anything with. I broke my toe out there yesterday measuring that where that chicken coop was. Bowl would come down and smash it.
Any thoughts?
As long as we can maintain the distances that it currently is, if he wants to add an additional structure later on, he'd have to come back before this zoning board.
An additional poultry?
An additional poultry. If he wanted to add additional structure of any kind that would encroach on the neighboring property, then he would have to come back before this zoning board, because what he has shown to us today is an exhibit showing where the current building that he's wanting placed is where it currently is.
It was proposed to be, that's the proposed website, right?
That's actually where it's sitting, that's where it's sitting right now.
Oh, it's actually where it sits, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not going to be moved, it's sitting there.
Okay. If there's to be any new structures in the future, he would have to come back before this board.
So are you giving me a motion with conditions?
I'm giving you a motion with a condition, that if he wants to.
That would be for a chicken pen, for a new chicken pen, or something like that? Or for goat sheds? Because we're gonna be, we've got baling equipment. We need to get sheds built. We've got a pile of woodland out there, ready to build a shed to cover our equipment with. It's gotta be up there in front of my house, right across the street.
Do you wanna put any new shed that houses animals, or is used as coverage for animals? Or in general?
I just, I guess if we're going to, I'll tell you what, if he's gonna have any structures within a certain distance of the property line, just to house animals, for the purpose of housing animals, anything closer than, what is the current ordinance now, Mr. Doug? Is it 200 feet?
200 feet.
Well, that's from the property line, then you have 1,000 feet from the next home other than the owner's, and then 2,600 from any of his own, residentially his own property.
So any kind of equipment, or anything, he's gonna have to get permits for that to the county, and it's gonna have to fall under county, under those setbacks and standards, correct?
If it's associated with the animals.
No, I'm telling you, if he builds a pole barn to put his equipment under, then he needs a permit.
It wouldn't have to meet those setbacks, yeah. He'd have to get a permit, but there's different.
That's a separate situation. If he's gonna build that, then that would fall into the building zoning for a permit on that.
Right.
And equipment pole barn has different, different distances.
I mean, I'm just saying, he was saying that was, he won't build that, so, you know, it's any building that would be considered for housing animals. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Then make a motion to approve with any, any structure that is to be a.
Additional.
Additional for housing animals.
And then how many, okay, no matter how many feet?
Right.
Okay.
Because, I mean, 2,000 something feet from the residential, I mean, we're already.
So you don't wanna just do any structure?
No, just for housing animals.
Housing animals, okay. Is that the only condition?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. On, perfect time. Motion to approve with one condition, any new structure to house animals anywhere on the property would need to come back to planning and zoning. My only question about that, do we wanna put anything about number of chickens? Do we? I'm not saying that, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, do, is there any concern with that?
I think with what he's currently showing to housing, if he puts more than what he's stating now, that's his problem.
And he's gonna have to come back here. And he's gonna have to come back here. Okay.
You're not gonna house anymore.
That's on.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with one condition being any new structure to house animals must come back to planning and zoning prior to starting that project.
Madam Chair, what about expansion of the current one? That wouldn't be a new structure, that would be the same one, just making it bigger.
Do you wanna amend your? Any new structure, expansion of current?
I think if he's going, anything additional increase in square footage for a dwelling for an animal would require a comeback before this board, whether it's an expansion to the current building or propose for a new structure.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So would that change?
With that, with that conditions, I'll say it.
All in favor?
In unanimous?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Crook, so the next up will be the ignitioners, and the sign will disappear, and the sign will come back up.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Okay, item four, a new business application for special exception, SPX 2023-02, Chad and Peggy Cleve?
Cleve.
Cleve.
Thank you.
2303 Pickard Road, parcel 014056. Okay, so first on my list is, Mr. Cleve, you're on here, so if you'd like to speak, if you'd come up to one of these marks and give your name and address.
So I'm Chad Cleve. My wife Peggy's not able to be here tonight with us, she's not feeling as well, but we come before the board today to request approval of a micro RV park to add to our property. My wife and I traveled across the United States in RV for quite some time. Stayed at great micro RV parks as a professional, working networking support and computer support and software support across this nation. And we stayed at some really bad ones. And what we're looking for is, we're looking to build one that we can provide the same type of service to people who are traveling in the local area. I say local, it could be Atlanta, it could be Macon, it could be Columbus. We used to travel 60-plus miles easily to go to and from work when I was in San Jose, California. And it's not a long-term stay that these people are gonna be, they're gonna be living in these motorhomes. I mean, y'all created these ordinances that I've never seen in my life, in any place that I've ever lived. And they're pretty intricate, they're pretty well thought out, they're pretty well designed, and they have a lot of requirements to take away a lot of the concerns that I would have as a person who would be looking at somebody bringing in a micro RV park in my neighborhood. I also don't, I also, as we look to build this, you know, we're not looking for tremendous amount of traffic, it'll be, you know, a limited number of people who will be staying there. We have, I don't wanna say high standards, because I'm not haughty, I'm not prideful, I'm not anything like that. But not just anybody's gonna stay at this certain park. They're not. Their RV isn't gonna stay there. We've all seen the movie National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation, right? You all seen that, right? When Eddie shows up with that RV, the first thing people think about when you say RV park, oh my God, it's Eddie. I'm telling you, it's not Eddie, right? I own the 2006 Winnebago Tour, 40-foot diesel pusher, it costs $250,000, brand new. I'm talking high-end motorhome solution here for people. These aren't the kind of people who are gonna show up. They're gonna go to work. They're doctors, they're lawyers, they're engineers, they're networking people like myself, they're software engineers, they're programmers, they're developers, they're all of these different roles that they fill. They just need a place to call home when they're traveling. And they relocate for time, for at a time, six months out of the year, sometimes a year, a year at a time. And we understand the rules and the guidelines. I've gone through it with Doug, I've gone through with any questions I had with him, he's been very helpful answering any of those questions about what the rules are and what they aren't. And we understand having to manage and maintain, this person stays in lot A, they don't move to lot B simply because they live, they stay there for a year, now we go to lot B. That breaks the rules, and we understand all that. I'm not looking to create havoc and problems, I'm looking to create a solution. My wife and I thought about this, sorry, back in 2011. This is when we started this dream. We relocated to Georgia in 2020, and then COVID hit. We were parked in our motorhome, we ended up buying a house we really didn't want, and lived in it up in Griffin, simply because we just had to have a place to call home. And then the Lord blessed and provided us a way to buy another property, this 8.81 acres we currently have. And our dream has always been to create this micro RV park. Yes, it will create revenue for our family, and that's a blessing, that's a blessing. But at the same time, it gives people a place to call home when they're traveling and they're working. And that's what we wanna create, a professional environment where, I mean, there's not partying, there's not, I mean, I can say no alcohol all I want, whether they believe it or not, but if I see alcohol, they're gone. We will adhere, we will enforce these rules. It's simply, this is our property. We're not, we're not gonna allow whatever just happened on this, on this property, because we want peace and quiet. We didn't move to this location where we live now, at 2303 Pickard Road, the idea we would move tomorrow. This is our forever home. We plan to die here. We plan to stay here as long as the Lord allows us to stay. We would not invest money, a mile of money, into something that we didn't feel was gonna be of value to the community. We wouldn't ever invest anything that's gonna take away from our property value. If you've been by our property, and hope all you have since you have this hearing, there's a lot of changes that have occurred, all positive. All positives increase property value. We, that's the way we do things, we do things right. Now, I would think all of you would have to agree that an RV park is neither good nor bad. I mean, it's just there, right? It's physical spots, it has dump sites, it has electrical, it has water, but it's the people that matter. It's the people that you will help stay there, it's the people that manage it. Those are the ones that make it positive or negative. The same way it is at a restaurant. You go to a restaurant because you like the food. Well, it's the same food that they make at a different restaurant, it's just this cook makes it better than the other one, right? It's the people, it's the service. And those are the kind of things that we are adhering to in this process. We understand all the guidelines. I mean, I don't have a perfectly diagrammed piece, because I, I didn't wanna spend the time to put together an engineering diagram or the cost until we got past phase one. So this is a very rough sketch of the area, but it gives you an overall idea of what we want to build in the concept. We are, we'll have a 30-to-a-40-foot wide driveway all the way down into the park. That way, traffic can easily come and go. I'm not gonna create a bottleneck there on that curb, because some people drive around that curb way too fast. Hence, you know, that's why we got our car wrecked in the, you know, that was parked in our driveway three or four weeks ago. That drunk driver went off the highway. Thank God he didn't hit our house. But so, all I'm saying is, we understand that, and we would even ask the county to lower the speed limit on that road, because it's just too fast. 45, come to 35 around that corner, those are the other things that we would like to propose. But by creating that wider driveway, we help the vehicles get off the road quicker. That's our number one goal. We help the vehicle get on the road quicker. We also would create that driveway directly across from North Pickard Road, which gives it a whole nother level of room to turn, right? So we would create that environment where it's safe. Now, having driven a motorhome for, I don't know, 15 years, I made the mistake of driving on Pickard Road on my motorhome, and we moved to 2303 Pickard Road, Thomasville, Georgia. And there are curves on Pickard Road you ought, should not take when you are in a 40-foot diesel pusher on Pickard Road. We will do our best to redirect the traffic to come off of 74. They'll take an immediate right onto Pickard, and we're 812 feet down the road, and they take a right. It's a simple lane, it's a simple out. Now, will somebody mess it up and go the wrong way? There's another Chad out there, I guarantee you. Because we listen to GPSs sometimes, and GPSs don't always get you in the right direction. So I expect there would be a little bit of traffic whenever that did occur, but the amount of traffic is very minimal, because these people, all they want is a place to call home. They're gonna park there, they're gonna stay there, they're gonna drive to work, they're gonna come back home, and they're gonna call it a day. What we're asking for is your approval on our request, so that we can fulfill a dream we had back in 2011 to provide a micro RV park and a service. That's what I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't think I officially opened the public hearing, did I? If I didn't, I am now. Next on the list is Jacquin Lewis. If you could state your name and address for me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jacquin Lewis, I live at 1978 Pickard Road, which is about a quarter-mile due east of this location. due east of this location. I have many concerns. I also own a thirty-eight-foot diesel pusher. Going out Seventy-four, what she just mentioned, is a terrible idea. Because many of you know that, that caution light is, I mean, you can't, I mean, I went out that way for six years to work at Meriwether County, and it's just, it's just a terrible thing. Many times I go up to Fire Tower because of the traffic in the mornings and in the afternoons, it's just horrific. But anyway, I digress. The one thing that I'm concerned about is the sewage. I did some research, each site should have a five-hundred-gallon tank, sewage tank. The water supply, are you going to add another well, is that going to put strain on the veins in our, in our community? Because we are all well-watered. The buffers, you know, I've read the ordinance, as I have in here. Of course, the traffic flow in itself right there in the curve, if you look at the map, this map is really, it's not the best map in the world because it's more of a curve here. I would think it would have to have a D cell and an acceleration lane right there put in because North Pickard Road is a, almost a one-lane road. It's not really a two-lane road that you call a two-lane road, but it's really very, very narrow. And I just feel like that the, without a D cell or an acceleration lane right there, you're going to, you're putting so many people at, at risk right there. I camp, we camp a lot, and we love it. I'm not opposed to camping, I'm not opposed to nurses living in RVs for long, you know, long stays and all that. I do know that Upton Regional does not have any traveling nurses at this time. I've done my research on that as well. The ensuring of the in-going and the outgoing in quiet times, is it going to be gated where people can't just meander up and down the road? We've had that problem with the church that's up there. I mean, people walk at three or four o'clock in the morning, you have dogs that wake you up, and next thing you know, you've got the Sheriff's Department out there, and we don't want that. You know, will there be cameras? Will there, you know, will there be security systems for these folks? The garbage, you know, you've got to be able to get in and get out. I mean, I've ridden by there, I've stopped, I've looked. You know, you're going to have to do some, some expensive grading to get in and out, especially if you've got a fifth wheel or if you're a tongue puller, because you've got to drag. I mean, honestly, I don't know how you got yours in there when you, when you first moved. I don't, I really don't know how you got in there, but you did. What are quiet times? I know that typically, quiet times is a little after dark, people's lights start going off, and you know, people get quiet, they hang by the fires. But what is your quiet time? Are you going to allow ATVs? Are you going to allow golf carts? Are you going to, you know, add secondary mobility for them to roam the neighborhood that's going to, that's going to cause even more traffic on the road? But, and I would implore the, the board to say, let's put out some strips if you are even thinking that it's okay to put this there. How many cars go up and down Pickard Road? And since it's been paved, it is the Daytona five-hundred. I call county numerous times, State Patrol has got where they're sitting out there, because people, when they get to the top, I live almost at the bottom, they see how fast they can go. And when they go up the hill right there at Miss Brown's house and start down, that's where this property is. And I just think that it's just a terrible idea. Then I saw in the ordinance where it says tent pads, you know, are tent pads going to be allowed at this RV park? Because as we all know, we have been inundated with homeless people, and, you know, they do have money, and, you know, I, I just don't want that in my neighborhood. I, you know, I'm, I'm not one to like controversy in any way, but I also talked with Peggy and company just to get an idea. I said, okay, so if you have to put in a, you know, a D cell and a XL, you know, lane right there, and I showed him the map, I said, what would it cost the county to do that? Because that would have to be the county because that's part of the product line. And he said, you're looking at anywhere from a hundred thousand dollars to a million-dollar project. I don't think we have that kind of money. You know, I may be wrong, but I don't think we have that kind of money for that. But I think that it would be necessary for the safety of the community, the safety of children. What will it do to property value? It may up his, but what's it going to do to mine? When I go to, you know, sell my property, what's it going to do to my property? There's RV park in our neighborhood, it's going to cause it to increase or decrease, I don't know. But we have had numerous people to write letters that have contacted me that, you know, I mean, I have nothing against these folks at all, we welcome anybody into our neighborhood, but I do not welcome this, more does most of the neighbors that have sent letters to the commission chairman for District Two. And we are, we are totally against this. I know that there's a few people that are for it, but I just, I see many concerns, especially when it comes to the safety, the sewage, that's going to be horribly expensive for somebody to have five, if you're going to have five spots, you're going to need five five-hundred-gallon tanks. And that's what most RV parks that have individual tanks, and then I think if I'm not speaking out of turn, you're going to have a shower house, so that's, you know, you're going to have to have water supply for that. And then you're going to have twenty-amp, thirty-amp, and fifty-amp also besides for that, so. I am totally opposed to it as being a quarter-mile up the road because I see, I just foresee it being a, I don't know, I just think it's an accident way it's happened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next on my list, I believe it's Steve. Steve Brown, if you'll state your name and address, of course.
I'm Steve Brown, I live on nineteen-fifty-four Pickard Road, and I'm going to speak on behalf of my mother who lives on twenty-one fifty-six, at the top of the hill where Miss Jackie was talking about, the runway. We have to literally sit there in her driveway and count to five seconds because you can't see the traffic coming over the hill, you can pull out the car anytime and get killed, right? And most of y'all know Pickard Road, Daddy, and it's really congested. You've got the side road coming in, you already got the restaurants, you got the motel, you know, and, and I don't see the need for campers. And I speak also, I know for a fact, they sold nine acres beside my mother, and a family from Burnett County bought all three lots, and they're going to build three retirement homes for them when they retire. So there's going to be either one or three more driveways on that curve cut into it going up the side of that hill. So that's going to be more people coming in and out over the time. Like I said, it's, I, you know, his dream started in 2011. My dream's been here all my life. I moved to Pickard Road thirty years ago for it to be a country, sit back in the country and be by myself, you know, and that's the way I intend to keep it if I can, as long as I'm alive. So I don't see any really, I don't know much about the campers and the hookups and all that, but I know it's a congested area, and I just don't see where we need it in hopes and care. Thank you.
All right, next on the list is Mary Ann Hughes. You set your name and address?
Mary Ann Hughes, nineteen-oh-two Pickard Road. I am about a mile from the proposed location. I think it's an interesting proposal, and I can't say that I am a percent against it. I wanted to hear what Chad had to say today. Have spent an entire year traveling in a thirty-two-foot travel trailer with my family one year as an adventure over the entire country, so I've had a lot of experience also, full-time RVing and seeing what that environment looks like. I think that my, I don't necessarily, my, my opposition to it is similar to what Jackie and Steve said, that end of Pickard, which we're all on, is a raceway, and to add anything more to that just seems dangerous. The suggestion that the RVs would go out Fire Tower and onto Seventy-four by the hotel and the restaurant is frightening to me unless there was some kind of new traffic light that was put in there, because trying to get out onto that road, like Jackie said, in the morning is extremely dangerous. And then they put these like strange little bumps as you turn right by the crest-side grill, which means that you have to come to a really strong stop before you try to pull out really far or else you drive over them. And no matter what happens, if you take that right-hand turn and you take a look and you, then you take that right-hand turn, by the time you pull out, there's someone right on your bumper. Because they come around that corner and they are flying. Same thing on Pickard Road, people fly. If we go to check our mail, it's like a, a life-threatening event every day to check your mail on Pickard, because we live right where the hill comes up over, and you just, I mean, I don't know how many times I've seen a car come up as we are down there and just have to like swerve all the way around us. So it is a busy, fast area of Pickard Road. That's number one. Number two, I don't see, maybe I don't understand, and maybe I need to read some of the ordinances or the rules about doing something like this, but as it's described, it sounds lovely. Professionals, basically living there, being able to enjoy a nice environment. I don't know how we do that. I don't know who is it that oversees that? Who is it that determines that these people are, you know, lovely, law-abiding citizens? They've come from someplace, no one knows who they are. I worry about a transient population. I worry about what kind of individuals and their character, and who knows them, and how do we know that they're, you know, not just fleeing from something bad? Again, I did live in an RV park for a year, we traveled the entire country, we hit almost every single state. Some of them are nice, as Chad said, some of them aren't. Even the nice ones had creepy people in them. And that's less than a mile from my house, where I am home alone a lot, actually, because I have a husband who travels ninety percent of the time. And just like everybody else who lives on Pickard Road, it's a lovely, rural, quiet place, so the idea of having anything other than that is a little bit disheartening to me. And then just the fear factor of not knowing these individuals who might come for short periods of time, and we just don't know very much about them. And I know that we don't know that about anyone who lives in there, but when it's a transient population, it lends itself, I think, a little bit more to potentially disruptive or, what's the word I want to use? Untrustworthy populations.
All right, thank you. All right, do I have a motion? We have no one else, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Can I say something? Well, am I able to respond to any of those comments?
Sure.
After, Mr. President.
After.
Oh, after.
Well, wait a minute, hang on, hang on.
For our public hearings, the applicant has the right to begin and then respond to the question.
So, so in that case, I will reopen the public hearing and allow you to respond to that?
Appreciate it. No, I appreciate their comments, and it is, they're well thought out. As far as the RV park design, the code and the ordinance pretty much dictates exactly what we have to do. There'll be a septic, there'll be a well, there'll be a brand-new well that we'll have to drill, we'll have to have a septic installed, everything will have to be done, you know, the right way, by code. The electric's going to have to be ran, has to be run underground, it can't be run up in the air. The sewer, or the, the shower facility is required by code. Normally, I probably wouldn't put one in because there's a lot of places we stayed that they didn't have them because you have them in your motorhome, but it's a requirement by code, so that's why there's going to be a man's restroom and a lady's restroom and a shower room for both and then separate, and then also a laundry, so they require that. So I mean, it's like the Taj Mahal, right? So it's, like I said, you, you thought, you thought very thoroughly on the code to provide the needs for all the people, and I don't think that's a bad thing. You know, the, I won't disagree that the speed is crazy on that road. Luckily, on the corner we're on, it slows down a little bit, but I mean, it's still, it's still up there. But having driven motorhomes and having been on the road, that's everywhere. I mean, you can't control people. I mean, you drive on Seventy-five any time? Is it sixty-five mile an hour? Mm-hmm. Does anybody do sixty-five? No. If it's seventy, they're doing eighty. It's just, it's just what happens. So I mean, I can't really do much about that. You know, the, the circumstances of trying to, you know, prevent the wrong kind of people coming. Our grandkids live with us. I guarantee you, I will not allow the wrong kind of people to come. I mean, it just ain't going to happen. Because we are also wanting to protect ours, right? We want to protect our family, we want to protect our children, we want to protect the community, the surrounding children, and everybody else, right? I mean, whether it's a background check, whether it's a, you know, a credit check, whatever it might be, there's different ways, because we had to do that. When we traveled, we would contact somebody and say, hey, we drove by, saw you had a micro RV park, we'd like to stay there. Well, we need your social security number. Oh, you do? Yeah. Well, okay. Most people traveling who don't want to give you their social security number, you don't want them to stay there. But if you're willing to give somebody your social security number, you have nothing to hide, right? So that's how we did it, and that's how we would probably do this circumstance as well, simply because we don't want to bring a transient population at all. As far as the tents go, no, I don't see any tents. I don't, there's no need for it. I mean, that's not the purpose of this RV park. This RV park is going to be low activity, not high activity. Statistically, the, when you look at the word park, because I talked to several appraisers, because I was trying to understand value as well, the best answer I got from an appraiser after about twenty different responses of, yeah, it'll increase value, yes, it'll increase lower, it'll do whatever, was, we really don't know. Because to find a comparable home that's sold within X amount of miles from your property to say whether or not, and it has a micro RV park, or it has a park or something, is not going to happen. So they would have to do that in some type of a commercial way. Now, the positive part, if this park had a playground, if it had a playground, that increases property value between five and twelve percent across all parks, across all areas, if it's a properly maintained playground. We don't have that in the plans right now, but it's something we could do, we could do it, right? So I mean, we can, we can do different things like that if we need to, but today's, today's goal is simply just to, you know, to get the conversation started. I see no reason for ATVs, I see no reason for golf carts. These people aren't traveling to drive back and forth to different places, they're traveling to go to work. And so that's the job that they have, they're going to be parked there, they're going to be doing whatever, I don't see that. Now, is someone going to show up with one? Yeah, maybe, but we're not going to let them RV on our property, RV, I mean, run a, run ATV on our property. I mean, you can't get through the trees now, so I mean, there's no place for them to go. So if they load in a trailer and whip with some buddies or something, that's fine. But I mean, I, I don't, I don't see that being a concern, but I appreciate it being brought up, because to me, I hadn't thought about it, so that's not a bad thing. Seventy-four, you're not wrong, Seventy-four is not the right place to try and turn anywhere. That's way too fast, but I can't do anything about that. Because the other option is to go down Pickard Road, and honestly, that's just as bad on the other end of Seventy-four because then you've got about a half a second to get off, you know, to turn left before you start going to town, before someone comes over that blind hill, right? So at least have a little bit more time when you're, when you're down there on the other side of Highway Seventy-four because you do have the flashing yellow light, whereas the other side, you have nothing. So plus, there's a lot of curves and things that are, that are way too sharp to try and take with a motorhome. I think, security cameras, I mean, I, that's a possibility, we could do something like that to provide the security for the people. I know, I appreciated it when people had an RV, where we stayed at a micro RV park and they had security cameras, because I felt safer. I have no problem doing that. I used to install those myself, so I don't have a problem doing that. Quiet times, I want to answer that? Twenty-four hours a day. That's it. Quiet times, twenty-four hours a day. These people aren't partying, these people, I've been one of those people. When you get home from work, you know what you want to do? You want to sit and relax outside underneath your awning, and I drank sweet tea, and I would sit there and just relax and just enjoy the weather. It wasn't about partying and making noise and inviting friends over. That's not the environment we're creating at all. So quiet times, twenty-four hours a day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. That's how we are, we're proposing it, and that's even in the rules and in the documentation that should be in front of you, so. But I just wanted to have a chance to answer those, and I thank you for that opportunity.
All right, thank you. Do we have, anyone have any questions? Do we have, anyone have any questions?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
What makes you think there's something in this area that would draw those type of professionals that would come in and stay in your, in your RV park? I mean, really, I mean, just.
Fair question.
The hospital's the only thing here that's likely to do that.
Right.
And so, I mean, other than that, you've got an hour's drive to any area, you know, 45 minutes' hour's drive to any real professional that would be looking for a place. Just, I mean, what's gonna draw people, that type of professional person here that's gonna camp?
Yep, so there's a whole group of people out there that actually travel and camp. I mean, that's just a whole, that's a lifestyle.
And sure, I understand that, but I'm saying.
But we're not talking about campers. We're not talking about people who are camping, we're talking about people who are business professionals.
Right.
Like myself. When we traveled in the motorhome, I would, we would travel, you know, to a location, stay in a micro RV park, either I worked remotely or I had to go to the office one day a week and then come back home. In today's world of technology, it allows people to work remotely and then go to the office, you know, for one week out of the month and then be at home three weeks out of the month. So it allows you a lot of flexibility in those scenarios. So you could literally work from anywhere to be, you know, especially as a software engineer.
I understand if they were about working that.
Because I'm a software engineer by trade and so that's what I do. And so, I mean, if it was a software engineer, that's what they would do. If it was a doctor who was working up in, you know, up in Peachtree City, I mean, you, they would find a place to park their motorhome and they would drive to Peachtree City to be a doctor and then they would come back to, to stay wherever they were. So when I traveled, I didn't mind traveling 80 miles because I wanted to go where it was peaceful and where I knew the RV was safe. That to me was more important because it wouldn't be very good for me to travel and not be able to find a motorhome when I got back home. So, to your point, there's probably not a lot of towns, but that's where we live. And so, if you went 50 miles, 80 miles outside of Thomaston this way, there's a lot of opportunities for people that would be traveling to meet those requirements. Right now, they have no place to stay. So, I mean, they just don't have a place to stay. There aren't a whole lot of places they could call home that I would call safe. There's RV parks, but I wouldn't call them safe. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Okay. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Again.
Motion to close.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Can we get your?
Absolutely. This presentation is a summary of the staff report that you have, so I'm not gonna hit all the points of the staff report, just some of the high points, as we call it. You've heard Mr. Clave, his wife is also one of the owners and the applicants in this particular case. This is 8.81 acres on Pickard Road for a five-spot full hookup micro RV park. The reason why we're here is because our AR zoning allows for various special exceptions. In this case, a very broad category of recreation facilities and so pretty much anything that would be considered a recreation facility would come before you and the Board of Commissioners for approval in this fashion. In the area, we've got AR zoning all the way around, a lot of wooded property, single-family property in the area, not dense, but scattered. And then, of course, down at the corner on 74, you've got three, we'll say, commercial buildings. We have three commercial buildings at that corner. All right, there are review standards by which you and the Board of Commissioners must follow in evaluating proposal consistent with our local ordinances as well as state law. We also have the comprehensive plan, we have character areas now stipulated. This particular area, this property is in what's called a rural community area and there are some goals that apply in this particular case in the comp plan. Staff has done an analysis based on the specific criteria in the ordinance. Contrary to the purpose of the ordinance, obviously, this isn't, it's one of those uses that is allowed by special exception, so if it was excluded, it wouldn't even be on the list. However, because it's not by right, that means, well, sometimes it might be a good idea and sometimes it might not and there might be specific conditions. So it's certainly not contrary to the ordinance, but it is a special exception, not a by-right use. In terms of detrimental to the adjacent properties, you need to look at the type of impacts. You've heard some of that discussion. Traffic, noise, the population, maintenance, the sort of things that you've heard discussed. Again, just about any facility can be a detriment and negative and any facility can be an asset. It all depends on the people who are customers in that particular business or location and, of course, management and maintenance of the property. This is no different use than anything else. The nuisance and hazard criteria falls into the same thing. Anything well-maintained and managed can be an asset and anything that's poorly managed and maintained is going to be a nuisance and hazard and my health is willing to get complaints about it. There are not obvious negatives, except you're adding additional traffic. I think the fact that this is relatively small, obviously, and this is in 50, 60, 70, 80 units, obviously, the impacts are gonna be fewer. The requirements in addition to this process, if this were to be approved, of course, you've already heard reference to our ordinance. I think the RV park requirements are, I believe, in seven, eight, nine pages, so I can't go through all of those requirements, but as was alluded to, they are extensive. Most of you on this board probably were here when we passed that ordinance, so you're very familiar with what those requirements are. Obviously, permits for the driveway, septic tank, wells, and then, of course, as a business, they would have to pay occupation tax. Those are at least the obvious additional requirements that there would be. In terms of staff recommendation, this is if it's going to be approved. There are some conditions that I think need to be required. One is a timeline. We have these projects, sometimes it don't happen and I think we need to start imposing timelines that within a certain time of approval, permits are applied for development happens. In this particular case, there's a development site plan that you're required to approve and would also go to the Board of Commissioners. You see in your packet and I'm gonna show it here in the graphics. I don't believe that that's the development site plan and I certainly understand why the applicant wouldn't want to go through something engineered at this point until they're a little bit more sure that they're going to be approved. So I would not recommend approval of the site plan that you've got before you. I would expect that one of the conditions is that something more detailed and specific and professional quality needs to come before you. Obviously, any change in that plan would have to come back through the process. Again, I talked earlier about the completion dates. And then lastly, there is a provision, visitor and camper registry, we would expect that to be maintained. And obviously, the concern, and you remember the discussion when the ordinance happened, is that there is a definition of camping that you may not exceed. There's also a different provision for professionals who are here for work purposes. Because that was alluded to, I will go specifically into that if I remember. It's maximum of 12 consecutive months here respective of the calendar year and I think it's in six-month increments. So you get a permit for six months as a professional, you must have a letter from the employer explaining why you're there temporarily. And I don't remember the details, but I think you could get one more six-month extension and then you pick your 12 months. If you want to continue that lifestyle, you're gonna have to find another park somewhere else. So that provision is in the ordinance. You certainly know your duties here. I'll go through the graphics now. This is, yeah, this is a little bit easier to see. The aerials, sorry about the glare on the photo, but let's see. Just one y'all want to look at. I'm gonna get my pointer out here. You want to look in the background here?
The general.
All right, so is my little dot there? No, it disappears. All right, the dot disappears. All right. Anyway, you'll see on the eastern side, that's where the park is gonna be. You can see in the design, the sketch design that you've got, it's gonna be at that eastern end. It's basically a small, I'll call it a sliver, where the park will be on that end. You'll see it's immediately across from those two homes that are up on the hill. There are photos in your packet of those two homes. Then there's an entrance, there's a photo in the packet that shows where that entrance would be. You've got north Pickard Road, basically, almost, but maybe not quite lined up with that particular entrance. Then you'll see photos of the Clave's home and the things around there. And then you'll see some photos of the business end of Pickard Road and 74 and a couple of the adjacent homes. So just to give you the geography based on this aerial photograph that you've got. All right, so here's that sketch. Really, I think it's self-explanatory. Again, I don't think it quite has the detail that we need to be, the site plan. Before you do approve it in some fashion, whether it's after a general approval or a specific approval, you're going to have to have that site development plan because that is in the ordinance that specifically must be approved. With all those details, in my staff report, I mentioned some of the things that I think are missing in this sketch plan. Just, they're mostly details. I think you've got the basic information in the site plan, you just don't have the specific details. All right, this is looking to the west. You'll see I'm basically standing about where the entrance would be on their property and this is the curve and that's their home off to the left. So again, looking west on Pickard Road. And this is the entrance, that's where approximately their driveway would be, obviously, would have to be more developed, but there is a current path through the woods there right now. And this is north Pickard, obviously, to the north of the property. These are the two homes that are immediately across the street. Now, this is the view east from the Clave's home. So you can sort of see up there where the yellow sign is, that's about the distance from their home to where the RV park would be. This is their home, the east side yard, the west side yard. This is the next-door neighbor's house immediately to the, if you're looking at their house, immediately to the right or to the west. This is one of the homes that's a little bit down across the street to the west. So I believe there are either two or three homes on that north side of Pickard going towards 74 to the west. Then in the, as I've come, the commercial buildings on 74, we've got the Hopin and the associated restaurant, Crestside Grill, right across Fire Tower. And then, the neighborhood may have a better description of this commercial building than I do, but I've never known anything to be in it since I've been around. But it does exist and this is that corner intersection. And that concludes the staff report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions or input from the board?
The things I'll say is, Mr. Clave, I appreciate you coming in and talking to it and I appreciate the citizens coming in. You know, the thing that's kind of hard about this is I know the location very well. Most of my childhood, I grew up hunting out in this area and I do agree, from a traffic standpoint, you know, Pickard Road is much like Waymanville Road. I live on Waymanville Road, so it's traveled heavily, more so than, if you didn't live on it, you wouldn't know how heavily it's traveled. And you're right, the speed on it's much like Waymanville because I was one of those young kids back in the day that I was flying up and down Pickard Road because it was fun. Same way with Waymanville. So I have concerns about that and also the point of ingress egress off of Highway 74 onto Fire Tower is a concern. Mr. Clave, I'm not opposed to the park, to the thing, I just have concerns about the location and accessibility. I mean, Pickard Road is, you know, it's not the wide, I mean, they've done the paving so it's wider than it used to be, but it's still, I have a concern much as the citizens. I fully believe that you would do your part to make this be a quiet, peaceful, professional campground. As I've looked at the other campgrounds on Pobidey Road out on Highway 30, I'm sorry, 74 going to Macon at Heart of Georgia or whatever it's called out there, the other places that are available, you know, I, my concern is that although you're here today, who owns it tomorrow and what happens with it then? You know, because I've seen what Heart of Georgia was when the previous owner and what it is today. And that is a concern of mine and, you know, much like some of the same people that are here, I too went out into county. I will say that I struggle with this all the time. I moved out into county and I had an opportunity and I still do today, something is happening adjacent to my property and the only way I sought to prevent it was for me to buy that adjacent property to eliminate the potential chance that somebody do something similar to what you're doing. So, you know, I, in saying that, to the citizens, I would say, hey, if people buy their land, they have the rights to do things with it and I think this is an opportunity that the zoning allows it with special exceptions, which means that this could be allowed. And with the special exception, it gives this board, the commission, the county commissioners, the opportunity to put guidelines on it, probably more so than what is, I mean, basically it opens up the book so we can require Mr. Clave and his wife, if allowed, to do basically anything we ask them to do. We could make them say, hey, the RV park has to be so far off the road, it has to have this amenity and that amenity, you know. So that's my conversation I'm having with it. I'm struggling with it because I see the opportunity, but I also have major concerns with traffic, ingress egress off of Pickard because I was also looking at Mr. Courier's photos, you know, that, it's in a bad spot, I'm very familiar with. I almost had a wreck there because I didn't make up my mind in time if I wanted to go to north Pickard or stay on Pickard. And so at the last moment, I darted off on north Pickard because I wanted to get up Fire Tower Road quicker. So that's my conversation now about hear what y'all have to say before I make my final discussion on it.
Well, I share the same concern you do, as far as safety concern and far as the quietness of the area. And I know he has addressed it, but I'm still concerned about that. Like you say, if it changes hands, what's gonna happen then? I have no doubt that he's gonna do the right thing, but the next person who may come in, what are they gonna do with it?
Is the next person covered by those same rules?
We could make a condition that they have to come back to us.
The problem is, once the rules are, we can govern that you put a bathhouse, we can govern that you can only have five spaces. What we can't govern from a day-to-day is the people that are allowed to come in and out and the, I mean, it is, we're, we're not tasked with policing the people that you allow there and the, I guess we could put a condition on it that there could be no loud music or that there's certain things, but then that puts the responsibility on the local jurisdiction to police that. You know, they have a hard enough time policing drugs, other problems. And so that's.
So as far as the RV requirements, first, you can only stay there for 30 days maximum in one year if they're just camping.
Right.
You already have that in ordinance.
I did and.
And so you've already covered a lot of those other scenarios, which I get the understanding about the traffic, but just from personal experience, when we rolled in, we were there for three months. We pulled in with the motorhome, we parked the motorhome and I worked for three months wherever I was working. So this isn't a traffic on, traffic off, traffic on, traffic off. I mean, the amount of traffic that the true motorhome will be is minimal. Now, there will be another vehicle on the road, whether it's a motorcycle or a car or a truck, whatever this person has to drive to go to work. That to me is logical that you would say that there's gonna be five more vehicles That, to me, is logical, than you would say that there's going to be five more vehicles on the road than there are today. But as far as motorhome traffic, I don't see it, because these people would normally sign six-month contracts, and so they would be there for like six months. I mean, it just, to me, that's the, that's the design of the logic, and that's what we saw when we traveled and we did this. It just made sense. You can do a three-month contract, a six-month contract, or a one-year contract. And that's how it was set up. And so, that's how we would design this the same way. Can't control what the next people do.
Right.
But I believe they would be governed by the same rules by which this approval was hopefully created, and it was still there. And so, you still have to follow these guidelines, nothing else. And now, if you want to change them, come back to the board, go through the same process, and go through the special exception. I mean, that's, that's how I see it, but again, this is my first board meeting ever, so I mean, that's all I can tell you.
What's your estimated investment to get this to that point that you could...
Fifty grand.
Think you could do it for fifty?
I hope.
I don't know that you could do it for fifty grand.
I talked to the subject guys, I talked to the well guys, got access to a bulldozer.
Have you done any research or failures to see the market that would draw these, that you could get people here in those five sites?
Yeah, so, the research comes from people that do the same type of thing over in Gay.
In where?
Over by Gay. They have a micro RV park over there, and that's one of the places we stayed when we were traveling, when we first came to Georgia. And so, the demand is there. It's just, there's no place for them to go. And so, you just market it, when you're available, say, okay, here, we're available, and then you have those five sites. I would feel they'd be full, my usual question numbers are probably fifty percent utilization for the first six months, and then after that, between seventy-five to a hundred percent utilization. That's what I'm expecting. Simply because, once the word is out there, and there's a solution, and it's safe, and it's professional, and it's the right type of way that people can go, this is going to bring people. I mean, that's, that's what I, that's why we went to where we went. So, but as far as doing, you know, those analysis, I mean, I could, I can ask people, but I mean, I really don't have a way to analyze that, except for my own experience, really, to be honest.
Still think your figure of fifty is low.
Well, it's not high. I don't disagree with you. I mean, what I want to look for, and what it's going to cost me, may not be the same number. But I don't want to go through all of the work to figure out what it's really going to cost, until I have a reason.
Yeah. I know you, you made some references with God several times, and you know, the Bible says, you know, we don't start something until we've found out what it's going to cost to finish.
Amen.
You know, so, you know, I'm just saying that I don't know that you've done enough research to, I always am cautious from what I see, I'm just...
Well, you don't see all the paperwork. I didn't give you all of the outlines, I just gave you the overview. I mean, I have, I have profit, margin, loss, I have all of that calculated for the first five years, and I have the cost of implementation, and it sent me, oh, look, I have all those papers, but I didn't feel that that was necessary for you.
Well, I mean, the bottom line, it doesn't matter whether you fail or succeed, you know, in your, in your business on that side of it. If you fail, then it's out there, so, you know...
That's not what I meant. What I mean is, I've already caught the cost, I've already contacted the companies to give me an overview as to what it could potentially cost, and then I added some percentages to it. So I've already valid, went through that validation process, and I estimate, you know, hopefully around fifty, but it might be closer to seventy, I mean, when it's all said and done. So, I mean, fair point. I mean, I, I can't tell you exactly what it's going to cost, because prices of rock could change tomorrow. I mean, crushed rock isn't cheap, so I mean, that's, that's probably a big part of it, to be honest with you.
Mr. Curry, is there, what is the setbacks that would allow a camper to be to the rodway? What is that?
I, I don't actually recall, like I said, the ordinance is six or seven pages, but I want to say in the...
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet. So each of those sites...
Well, that's between...
Yeah. I was talking about from the rodaway.
Oh, from the rodaway.
From the rodaway. So if...
I want to say it's thirty to thirty-five, somewhere in that area.
I just saw it. I didn't see it in the plan.
I think it was thirty, but it might be thirty-five, if I recall.
Doesn't the book say someplace that any occupant or homeowner entering into any kind of installation should be offered the highest and best use of the property? And in this case, is that a consideration?
Highest and best use is a real estate term that we don't really use as planners. That's a profit issue. We don't deal with profit, we deal with planning and good land use.
All right. I thought I mentioned it.
Thirty-five feet front yard.
And the design of this, the RVs won't even be visible from the road, we're going to build at least twenty feet of trees, we're going to leave them, I'm not going to take them out, between the ditch line that we currently have of the property, and the actual backside of the RV, that's going to all be blocked off, number one, for visibility for people, but number two, for the privacy of the people who are camping, who are parked there and have their RVs there. You don't want to advertise, you know, and someone do that. So having it secluded is even better. And that hill allows that, and the whole, whole area allows that, because all they have is trees. You know, there's just not a whole lot else that property is really to be useful. And it's going to take a lot to level that off. I mean, that's not going to be a simple task, to try and make enough space where people can pull in, and they can back their bumper ditch, camper into a spot, whatever it may be. I mean, we're planning on doing twenty-two foot wide, one-way road all the way around, which gives them parking available, or thirty-two foot wide, one-way all the way around, to give them parking along the side of the road. So that solves the parking problem, and so we have, all of those, all of those are already pre-thought out, to make sure that, you know, we provide them a solution where it's not difficult for them to maneuver, you know, so I hope that helps.
So you're going to ask for a minimum six-month contract, so what's your, what's your...
What's our plan? Yeah, I'd love to have six-month contracts, because...
Is that, is that going to be what you're going to ask for the six-month contracts?
So, no, I won't ask for them. I think what we'll travel to do is a three-month contract, you know, because, I mean, to me, that's probably normal, ninety days, and then if they get up, you know, sixty days after that, or whatever the case may be. I mean, I think thirty's, I mean, thirty's too short, but ninety-day contracts make sense, because it just, I know where they're at, they know where they're at, problem solved. And most people, if they're going to do a contract job, they're going to do something for ninety days, it's usually a ninety-day contract that you sign.
Yeah. I don't, travel nurses have that, I guess, what could, ninety-day contract if they, they do it.
And there aren't around here, but there are some in Macon, there are some in Columbus, there are some in other areas, in the state too, so, I mean, there's other places.
I think that's going to, that's going to have a control over what the impact of traffic is on the road too, that. You know, if it's, if you've got long contracts, and you're only gaining, you know, the, the personal vehicles, once they get in there, so you're not doing a whole lot there, but that's going to be based on how much is in and out in the thirty-day stays and things like that. That's going to create a different situation.
Yeah, I would hope none. That would be my goal, is to not have those in the thirty-day world.
Mr. Curry, you stated something earlier about a site plan, it has to come back before which board for a site plan approval for this?
I believe technically, it has to be approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Would it come back before this board, or just Board of Commissioners?
Board of Commissioners, unless you request the approval.
Mr. Curry, do you have any other citizens sending emails or messages of support or...
Actually, my office did not receive any direct communication.
Anything else? Any other questions? Do I have a motion either way? Do you guys hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just checking.
What's your feeling?
I'm the same way. Troubled by traffic, less troubled if it's not campers coming in and out all the time, and it's a car. My concern is, I know you said you planned to stay there forever, but one day you plan to, you decide you want to leave, and you're selling it, and you're selling it as your home with five RV spots that are income for that property. My concern is the next person, yes, they have to follow the ordinances, the letter of the ordinance, but that doesn't mean that they govern people and situations the same as you. So my feelings are that if that property were to change hands, then that person needs to come back to us, the new owner, to apply for a special exception. That way, from the community, you know that person has at least been vetted, has gone through this process. Most people that are not going to do it the right way, aren't going to pay the money and go through this process. But that, that's my two, two points. Do I believe that there's, there is an opportunity or a need? I personally know somebody that was a traveling nurse, and this is what she did. Her company she worked for, they paid her a per diem, and that's what she did. And, but she, just like everybody's talking about, safety, you don't just want to pull up into any campground you find to stay there for ninety days, or sixty, or six months, or whatever. So, I, I do understand that, just from a personal, not, me not having done it, but I know somebody that has.
That makes it, as a travel nurse.
And, and so I understand that there is a, a market out there. Do I think we're sitting in the epicenter of that? I don't know. I can't tell you that.
Can I ask a question about what you said?
Sure.
When you say that the, if it were to change hands, if the ownership were to change hands, that the person would be required to come for a special exception also, how would that work? Like, if they had already purchased the property with an RV park, they wouldn't necessarily be able to use it as an RV park before coming?
They would have to get, right, correct.
But the special exception is just all about these, like, you got to build this, you got to build that, you got to do this.
The special exception also gives you the right to run an RV park.
Okay.
To put the conditions on it so that it can be required.
Right.
If the ownership changes ownership, that it can be required, that person have to come and go through the same process.
I mean, the picture, the picture is painted, meets all of the requirements, you know, that the counties ask. I mean, I, I understand that, the picture's painted, and it's being able to maintain this picture, you know, that you, that you put out here for us, you know, with no, there was no alcohol, twenty-four-hour quiet zone, and, I mean, that's, I just don't, I'm, that's the only thing, is to policing that. It's, I guess, it's, it's a picture that's there, and there's not a, I don't think we have a defined reason that we could, you know, to say no. But we could put, we put strenuous...
Strenuous conditions.
Strenuous conditions.
Yeah. I would like to, to see specifically, no tents, no ATVs, no golf carts, maintaining the buffer between the camping pad and the road. If this is truly what you're, you say what you're, what you said before, you really mean, that you, you really don't want anybody to even know that it's there, then no signage.
One thing that I'd like to add to, Ms. Chairman, is that driveway location, I have concerns where it's at, that I would, I would like potentially see it aligned more with North Pickard.
It's a bad drawing, sorry about that. It is aligned with North Pickard on the other drawing. I just touched it on the floor.
Okay.
It will be.
Okay. Do we want to go down the list of, I mean, I will write this down, and then we'll...
Somebody needs to make a motion.
But I, do we want to go down the conditions first, and then make a motion with these conditions?
Yes, just do that.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm going to say no golf carts, ATVs...
No tents.
No tents. Maintain buffer.
I'm disturbed.
Does the drought deal with animals? Does the drought, the ordinance...
RV ordinance is saying anything about animals?
No, there is nothing. It could have all the animals, or none of the animals, obviously a pet sort of situation. No, there's nothing in there about it.
A lot of people travel with cats and dogs, that's pretty common. They just do, I mean, when they travel across the country, they need something for companionship, so that's what I remember seeing a lot.
Honestly, Ms. McKenney, I'd like to see the opportunity, the site plan come back before this board for review.
Complete privacy buffer from the road.
The road.
From the road.
So, let me stop there and say, if we want to see the site plan come back here, have we rather not do any conditions until we see that site plan?
Yeah, we may as well do that, and just keep the public...
If I could, I'm not spending the money on an engineered site plan without knowing that that's condition to approve. I'm just not going to do it, it's two thousand dollars.
I don't, I mean, I don't blame you there.
I'm not going to do that. But I mean, we need to do...
So this is what I'll say, Mr. Clay, to that. In order for us to make a good determination, I would like to see clearly what you're putting there, how you accessing the drive, drive widths, you know, the actual, I mean, because what you gave us here...
There's a bunch of trees, I'm sorry, I just drew on trees.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying. Man, I'm saying that if we set the right standard, you know, if your site plan meets whatever criteria we're set, then that would be, that'd be the condition, it's going to meet every, you know...
Every one of these.
If it meets all of those, then...
And that's fine.
If the site plan falls in, then that would be, that would be the, the key stamp for approval or dis, or, or, you know, denial.
Okay.
You know, based on that, if you, you know...
That's fine.
That he has an opportunity, if he spends some money, he's got an opportunity to get it approved.
Yeah.
If he, you know, but it's going to be with all of these conditions.
Okay. And you said the driveway will be thirty-two foot, because you have listed it's twenty-two.
So, that was before, but thirty-two feet will be the round, the, all the way around, because that's, allows for the one-way traffic and parking. So we're going to make it wider than it needs to be.
Okay.
I won't say we're over-engineering, but we're probably over-engineering simply because we want to solve technical problems.
We would want to require him for sake of, I mean, because he's got gravel driveways. What's your intent on your driveway? You can be gravelled to come in off the, off Pickard Road?
Yeah, crush it around.
I, I would like to see a portion of it paved off of Pickard Road, so far back, you know.
You can't, you can't do that. You can't pave off the highway, can you?
You can pave off Pickard Road, is your driveway paved?
Asphalt, yeah.
Yeah, that's paved. So you would have to pave a certain portion back. The purpose for that is, when people are trying to come in and out, I know how it is with a gravel driveway, you throw, pull in a RV, you mash the gas, accelerate, you spin the rocks... spinning rocks, trying to get out, where if it's paved, you've got a lot more traction than, if that kid's coming down the hill at a high rate of speed and you see him coming, you can accelerate and go. So I think...
No wash, you know, eliminated wash.
And it's the wash, it helps with washing also. Any thoughts on that?
At least a brief ask.
What's the, how far back off the right of way should he? I mean, a truck length is typically twenty feet, so we wanna say twenty-five feet. He can have his truck sit there, if he wants to pull out and accelerate, he has that opportunity.
Has to be enough to lease, but the, the vehicle pulling...
That's right.
Be on, on paved.
What did you say, twenty-five feet?
Twenty-five, thirty feet.
Okay.
And, and, Mr. Clay, the purpose for that is just, like I said, I pull a twenty-one foot bass boat, when I go to pull out of my drive, my side driveway where it stays, and I see those trash trucks coming, I have to give a gas, and my truck's sitting there digging, I'm like, oh, you know what, I gotta go. You know, because I'm already committed to go. And I think to myself, I'm gonna pay you that eventually, just give me that opportunity. Okay.
All right. So I have no golf carts, ATVs, no tents, maintain buffer undisturbed between the road and the campsite. Special exception does not transfer with the sale of the property. Twenty-five foot of the drive from the road to be asphalt slash paved. Anything else?
All these should be put in there too. No alcohol. You know, if we can, if we can do those conditions, those need to be part of, part of the original conditions, is no alcohol, no fire pits, no loud music, quiet hours all day.
No fires.
No open fires.
Yeah, W fire pits.
Right. Anything else?
Do you go down the conditions of its sale, if it had to be reevaluated?
Special exception does not transfer with the sale of property.
I'm good.
Okay. So, do I have a motion that includes these conditions? I'm gonna read them out. No golf carts or ATVs, no tents, maintain a buffer undisturbed between the road and the campsite, no signage. Special exception does not transfer with the sale of the property. Twenty-five feet of the drive from the, starting at the road has to be paved or asphalted. No alcohol, no open fires, no loud music, and all day quiet hours.
And he will bring us the site plan?
I think if we make these.
Well, and the condition is that he's gonna bring a site plan if, if he meets, if he can prove that he meets all of these.
Yeah, that's what you requested.
Yep.
You wanted to request that we saw a site plan before the final.
Yes.
That all of those standards.
Site plan that, that shows, accounts for these things that we talked about, as far as, obviously no golf carts or tents or stuff like that, but the road, the paving, that kind of thing.
I don't own this, sir, I mean, if he's gonna meet that, we're gonna put these restrictions on him now, I'll just leave it to the county commissioners to meet these ordinances, they're gonna be the ones that's...
You understand, you still gonna have to, you'll have to do that before you go to county commissioners with that, probably. And that, if the final approval's still up to them, we're just set conditions.
So if I do the site plan, spend the money to do that, it goes to the board of commissioners, it can still be denied?
We don't have final say.
It could be denied, yes, sir. We're, we're a recommendation board, and that's it.
But you're recommending, but you're telling me I have to do the site plan before I go to the board of commissioners?
I think you need to do something a little more than what you're showing here today.
No problem with that, but I need to get it professionally done by an engineer.
I think you just need to be a little more detailed, detailed notes, detailed, and understand the conditions.
Exact place you're coming off the road, exact...
Yeah, because where you're currently showing it now is offset, offset with North Pickard.
Yep. Let me, let me fix that.
Which, if what I'm looking at, it affects it, you could lose site number five.
No, there's forty-five feet between each of those. I just marked them out there just to throw it, it's like three hundred feet from one side to the other. There's lots of room.
Okay.
All right. So with those conditions, do I have a motion to approve it or not?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Second. All in favor?
Now, it, it is, are we forwarding this to the board of commissioners, or it's coming back first?
Nope, it's not coming back, reporting it, he's got to have, be able to show the items on here at the board of commissioners that they can be done, or they will be done. So, whether it's a site plan or something of much more definition than what he's provided us.
Because he's already gotta meet all the design standards.
He has to meet all RV standards.
That's not, that's, that's what that question, that's just...
That's what, I mean, that's not...
Which is well said.
That's already set in place.
All the design standards he has to meet those.
Oh, that's already set.
Correct, these are additional to, to that. Everybody understand that?
Ms. Curry.
You good? All right. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Mr. Clay, we'll see you at October tenth, so you wanna have this ready for the middle. Anything additional that may be before that? And, yeah, you're gonna see the yellow sign disappear again, show up, but October tenth is the meeting. That's for the board of commissioners, if they, their conditions, if they have been recommended, that's a recommendation by the board of commissioners.
All right. Let me write them all. Four B is the application for special exception.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. SPX 2023-03, Willie G. Quiller, 536 Gordon School Road, parcel 046017. All right. So I have a list here. We'll open the public hearing for this. Mr. Quiller?
Come up.
Yes, come up to one of these places, state your name and address for me.
By which side?
Either one, on that, there's a mark on the floor.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Okay, my name is Willie Quiller, I live on 368 Marston Drive, and the property that I have out there is 536 Gordon School Road. And what I'm doing is asking for a venue for family reunions. The reason why I'm asking for it is because we didn't have no idea that we was gonna be doing this, and we started going, a lot of construction work on it, and people's families and friends started coming down there, and they really liked it, so I said, we might as well get a permit for it. You know, help pay taxes, a little money, make a little money, whatever, you know? And, other than that, I don't see no problem with it, you know? We do that, all they're gonna be doing is coming down there and enjoying itself inside in the country. The only neighbor we have cross from that property is a guy named Herb, and I talked to him about it, and he said he don't, he doesn't have any problem with it.
Okay. Are you looking to, to, like, just during the day?
Yeah, it's not gonna be an everyday thing.
Yeah, but I mean...
During, all depending on how far the family come from. If they come from out of town or wherever, then they can spend the night up there, the house that we renovated.
So you rent the house?
Yes, ma'am, it's one on there.
Okay.
You've been having family reunions already?
Our family's been getting together down there, yes.
What's the number of, the usual ten?
Most people we ever had down there probably was about twenty, twenty-five.
Do they go in tonight?
They stay down there sometime, it varies.
What time is lights out?
The lights are out about twenty, ten, and twelve.
Ten and twelve?
Yes. All depending on the year.
Are you on site when somebody's there?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Mr. Quiller right now?
So you are the responsible person when I start to draw the question?
Yes, sir.
How long have you had this venue?
Probably about, I mean, probably, probably about eight months, it's been a year, I don't think.
You gonna allow alcohol?
Uh, well, adults.
Yeah, I would have it would be everybody that's over twenty-one, but...
If they bring their own, you know, before it be behind them.
No, I, I, I mean, that's what I said, are you going to allow it?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, I'm not gonna lie.
Do you have a septic facility to handle all of these people?
I have a septic and a porta potty out there.
That's all right. Anyone look at this septic tank to approve it?
Yes, they came down and redid it. I called a helper over here. Helper.
So you have a ba, you, you saying you have a bathroom facility that's not part of the house?
Yes, there's one in there, part of the house, about.
No, I ain't talking about the, in the house that you're gonna rent, I'm talking about that there's, uh, for the event, you have a, have a bathroom available other than in the house?
Uh, porta potty outside.
Okay, then that's, that's, that's the, with, for the house, that's not a septic for the venue.
For the outside there?
I guess, Mr. Quiller, what he's asking is, in, in any of your facilities, other than the porta potty, and other than in the residence, in the home at which somebody could sleep in, is there a working bathroom?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
There is a working bathroom here on the property, other than in the house, in the residence.
So do you have a, do you have a, a...
Bathhouse.
Bathha, like a bathroom, exterior bathroom that people can use, outside of the house?
Oh, no, nobody.
And the porta potty?
So the only, the only bathroom you have is in the house?
Inside the house.
Or the porta potty?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you planning to allow any motorized vehicles? Like, like ATVs?
Like ATVs down there?
Yeah.
I'm his wife.
Yeah, okay.
Good. Anything else? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Quiller.
That's it.
Uh, for right now, I'm gonna, I think Debbie is your wife?
Yes, ma'am.
Debbie, do you have anything to contribute?
No, let me ask you something.
Can you, can you come up here somewhere?
My sister recently, she got married on Saturday uptown, and if we had the venue going, she could've got married down to Hollywood if it was approved. Now, we have like three four-wheelers, that's ours, and her kids came, so they rode the four-wheelers, but it's not like, we renting four-wheelers, those are our person four-wheelers. You see what I'm saying? So it's not like someone's coming in and doing all that.
Yeah, I think we're more concerned about you allowing other people to bring four-wheelers in? Or you're allowing events that include four-wheelers?
Okay.
That, that's what we're more...
Concerned about.
Yes.
So that's not gonna happen?
That's not gonna happen.
No, that's not planned, that's not what we plan on happening.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next, I have Dan Ellington.
Dan Ellington, I live at 862 West Gordon School Road. That property comes up to the back of mind, way back in the woods. I had other questions that he answered, I assumed that it was gonna be something other than what he described. I don't really have a problem with it, so long as they keep, you know, decent hours. The noise in that valley travels really well, and I can hear cars coming from that corner that his property connects to. That's, that would be my only concern about it. That's all I have to say.
Okay. All right, thank you. And the next is Sonny Barfoot. Do you have, okay.
I don't really have much to say myself, other than, I'm, I'm not against women, Debbie, I mean, I've known one high schooler, good friend of Debbie's mother, I got no problem. I'm just more concerned of what, what they're doing. I did have heard rumor of the ATV thing, I was curious about that. You just said that ain't gonna happen, so, you know, I had to answer my question there. My only, my only real concern would be how late, you know? And you say there's no alcohol, people can't bring it, I'm asking a question because, unless you're, of what I hear, I don't know.
So is that what you said, Mr. Quiller, no one, no one is allowed to bring alcohol?
No one is allowed to bring alcohol.
I'm asking you, is that what you said before? You said no alcohol.
What? I mean, you know, if they bring the alcohol everywhere else, I mean, what's the problem with it?
No, I, I, I'm sure that's a problem.
I'm just saying, though, you know, ain't, lonely down there, rowdy down there and all that right there.
That's, that's kinda what we're trying to make sure of, is, is we keep the peace with your neighbors.
Right. I don't have a one neighbor that I know of, but you in the back of me about a mile each. So, has my neighbor, the only guy, I got a neighbor that I'm looking at, cross that property is, Herb, his name is Herb, and he said he would come up here, he said he didn't have no problem with it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Mark. That was the last one on our list. Any other questions before we close the public hearing?
No questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, second.
All in favor? Okay. Ms. Curry, can we get your?
Yes, ma'am. Again, this is a summary of the staff report, you've got far more detail in the staff report than what I'm gonna go over. Heard Mr. Quiller explain his project on the ten point two five acres. We may wanna confirm whether the grounds is all open for the special events, the ten point two five, is there any part of it that's not? Again, the, in the application itself, the only events we see listed are playing music and cooking on grill, so we definitely need to find a more detailed list of explanation of what sort of events are gonna be allowed and, and what won't be, because it's not mentioned in the application. This is the north side of Gordon School Road, it is Zoned AR. And again, we are here, similar to the last case, this is AR zoning, we have a list of special exceptions, and indoor and outdoor special event venues, with a minimum acreage of five acres is, is one of those special exceptions, and that's why we're here. As you've heard, this is AR, very limited development in the area, pine plantation is on two sides, so there's no neighbors there other than pine trees, and then where... And then where there are single-family, they're very limited, and you'll be able to see that in aerial in your packet as well as what we'll put up here on the screen. Certainly, the question about the ATV is legitimate, if you oversee the property. Obviously, there's been a lot of similar activity, you know, whether they allow clients or customers to do that sort of thing is something that you definitely wanna define, because it's obviously, the land is used for that, if it's just for the families. We do have a set of review standards to use to evaluate these by both of yourselves and the board commissioners. The staff analysis, looking at those standards, again, with these sort of venues, noise, traffic, litter, safety impacts, are all gonna be a legitimate concern because you're inviting people to celebrate something, and that means basically it's a party atmosphere, and those, that's the sort of conduct that there will be. Again, it's very legitimate to be concerned about the ATV issues, and get those defined. Terms of detriment, again, you're gonna have additional noise, traffic. This is relatively secluded, now, I can't speak to the harmonics of the area, how far the sound will travel, but there aren't a lot of, a lot of neighbors. Now, the neighbors that are there are pretty close, and there is one undeveloped lot that's pretty close, but there's currently not a house on it. So as you can see here, there's one, five-twenty-eight Gordon School, that you have to drive literally within feet of the house to drive into the property, and that's the entrance off Gordon School. Then there's another house, it's approximately two-hundred feet, that's five-forty-four Gordon School, owned by B. James, B. James. And then immediately adjacent to Mr. Quiller's property, there's a single lot owned by a Ford. Now, obviously, I don't believe there's a house there, so anybody who bought that property and don't have a house yet would have to know that, okay, well, this is a facility there, so the facility would be there before they built their house. Again, whether this is a nuisance or hazard is, again, how it's managed and how it's maintained. Similar to the previous case, we have to look at the noise impacts, traffic, the type of people that are there, the type of events, what sort of security is gonna be maintained. You'll see in the conditions that, as proposed, would allow a fairly lot larger attendance than what we had just discussed, so that may be something that you wanna look at in the conditions, but I want to at least bring forth a uniform standard that was, existed in the conditions for the previously approved special event venues. We've heard that, well, I think we're not quite sure where we are on alcohol in terms of it being brought in, but if it was sponsored, whoever brings it in would have to be licensed appropriately. Obviously, as a business, there's payment of occupation tax, if there are any more structures, building permits, and if there's any more clearing lane disturbance permits. I, I think we're lacking a lot of information, whether you want this in the form, the verbal form you just got, or in written form. Again, I think we need a detailed list of the activities that will be permitted. Right now, you'll see in the photographs that there are at least three pavilions. Is that it? There's not gonna be anything else along? And of course, the house itself is a new twist, we've never had overnight stays on any of your previous venues, so that's a new twist. Again, how much of the acreage will be open for this? And I, I think we need some answers on the site entranceway. I don't have a photograph of this, unfortunately, but when I went to post your, this yellow sign and go in, there was one truck in the driveway, I couldn't go around it. So if you got people coming and going from an event, the entrance is gonna be after a whole lot wider than it is now, because I couldn't get it through with one truck sitting there. So the staff recommendations, again, these are brought forth from the two that I cited, specifically Harper Pines and Frog Hollow. You know, you need a minimum of five acres, and he's got the ten-point-two-five, he can designate all a part of that. We also discussed in those others, the type of venue, events that could be held, what might, may not be held. Now, you also see that in the previous condition C, motorized vehicle-related events were not permitted, so I guess that standard could stay in this particular one, because they don't intend on allowing that. Now, the number we've got here, and this is consistent, the other two venues were allowed to have up to three-hundred. So you gotta decide, are we gonna keep that in this particular condition or not? Now, top, unamplified, amplified noise has to stop at ten, and that's consistent, so if that's something you're content with in this particular one, we can go with that condition also. The other ones are probably pretty commonsensical. So, again, staff recommendations continue, that this not be transferable. In this particular case, that it'd have to come back if somebody else is gonna do it. Obviously, if there are any vendors that are brought on site, they have to pay their occupation tax, and we can certainly delete anything that deals with the ATVs. All right, going in the graphics. This is the tax assessor's map. Maybe Mr. Quiller has an explanation of the undeveloped road and what exactly that means or is. I don't know if there's an easement on that property or not. It's certainly treated uniformly as a single piece of property, from what I can tell, but maybe there's an easement that I'm unaware of. Now, when you come just shortly into the one entrance off of Gordon School, you look back, and you can see the truck that was blocking my way in, my truck's on the other side. This is the house, it's immediately at the entrance. So this is basically the entrance area to the venue. I guess this is the front of the house, back glass, whatever you would call it. When you get past the house, this is your view on the road going in, you can see it's an upslope, and then the pavilions, there's at least two of them you can see there, three. Third one's kinda dark, but it's a little better on the screen. Getting a little closer to those pavilions. This is the larger of the pavilions. And if you look to the right of that pavilion, which would be to the, would that be north? You got this cleared area where obviously activities could be held. And there's one of the other pavilions slightly down the hill. And both of those that are down, that's the house and the other pavilion. And this is the, I only went in that developed, that front area that you see, I don't go all the way back. So this is that road and area that goes back to the back of the property, I don't know what's back there, I didn't go back there.
So you went in and to the left?
Yeah, to the left and straight in, just as far as the quote-unquote cleared area was. This is obviously heavily troubled, whether it's ATVs or some sort of traffic, I didn't go all the way back there. And that concludes the staff report, ma'am, sure.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions? Concerns?
On what requirements that staff recommended for the court? My concern is that, is that, have you cleared a path around that property for ATVs?
We ran, we got, we helped, yes.
But you've cleared a track all the way around?
All the way around, yes. Let me say this right here, basically, that's what we bought the property for, for us to enjoy. And myself, we don't have nowhere to ride for the ATV at.
Yeah, I understand, I don't blame you for providing your own ATV's on the property, but, you know, we can't, we can't do anything with anything that's gonna be racing and competitive down there with it. And I think that's one stipulation you gotta nail, is, you know, with it, excluding racing or...
Racing, no, we don't race it down.
I'm just saying that that's, that's an exclusion that we would put condition, we put on there that if you do your own on there, that's, you know, that's something that I wouldn't have a problem with.
But you have others bring their ATVs in.
Bring them in for, you know...
Well, ma'am, I'm sure you just have to make, there's a prohibition in the earlier one, it just says you can't have them, period.
Right.
But if, if we heard from the advocates, they did wanna do it,
Right.
then the alternate could be added, and we'd have to change the...
Right. Uh, how are you handling trash from these events?
Oh, I'm taking care of that, there's no trash down there, I always pick it up, we pick it up.
I know, but I mean...
We don't throw anything in the woods.
What, where?
We have trash cans out there.
Okay, and you have trash service come pick, pick up the trash?
He now haul it out himself.
Take it landfill?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, if you're, if we're gonna wow maximum three-hundred, ten days to it, it's gonna be more than one porta potty.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it, you know, it depend on how many peoples be down there, and I get more porta potty than that.
But you said your, your goal was to only have twenty or thirty people there, is that?
We ain't had that many people down there, you know, if they come, they come.
Let me ask you something, what if it was, just bigger speaking, what if there was like fifty? Because we've never had no more, maybe twenty to thirty peoples down there. If it was like fifty people that was there, we would have an, need to get an extra porta potty, is that what you're saying?
If I understand what you, what you're trying to say is, this is a family affair?
Exactly, that's all it is.
But you're, you're asking to this so you can, you can rent the venue out to turn it into a profitable venue, and it's no longer than just a family affair?
Right.
That's, that's a request, and that's the reason, that's the reason we here all together, is because you're requesting to turn it into, into a business.
Yes, sir.
Can, can you refresh my memory, what is the limit that we put on the other venues?
Three-hundred.
Three-hundred?
Yeah.
How did we do the bathrooms on that?
I don't think we impressed them. Basically, allowed them to take care, but obviously if...
Well, I think most of them that we dealt with had separate bathrooms built. Bathrooms, so, um...
I would think, if we're gonna limit anything, a minimum of two.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, a minimum of two porta potties.
Fifty people, I'm...
You gotta, you gotta think about, if you got fifty people, are they trying to, one bathroom trying to service fifty people? Somebody's going to the bushes. And so, we don't, we don't want that, so... Mr. Courier, there's something that you had, you know, questioned, I see something in the deed discusses an easement. Mr. Quiller, the, the portion of the property that looks like it's subceded by a narrow strip through there, are you aware that that is an easement through there, that you can't put any? And I'm assuming what I'm reading on here, and I would have to study more, but this is something you need to know. As described in D Book five-sixty-four, page three-twenty-six, and D Book five-eighty, page one-forty-four, described as mapped parcel number zero-four-six-eight-zero-one-seven, subject property conveyed in seven-seven, that is certain mutual easement agreement between Barbara Cox, Bay County Susan Cox, Alabama, Pe Cox of Fulton County, Brady's of Marywood County, Gibberson, all these people dated on December thirtieth, nineteen-ninety-six. Clerk's office said property is further conveyed, except subject to restricted covenants, easements, declarations, utilities, and it's the right way to actually traverse or border such property. I just wonder if this, if there's an easement that splits your property, as Mr. Courier's pulled up there, that allows access to the, I'm gonna call it the tree farm in the rear, or the land in the rear, are y'all aware of that?
Where the cemetery, right, because it's a cemetery on the property.
And that may be, but there's...
It's a road that, that goes this side of the property, this side of the property.
Okay.
So there's a road that they can come in and go back there.
Okay, you see what's pulled up here, where is that cemetery in relation to? On the north side, along the tree line here, is it up in here? Where's that cemetery here, Mr. Quiller?
It is over, you see?
I guess the reason I bring this up, you would never be able to put a structure in here with one...
Oh, no, no, no.
We wouldn't do that, no.
No, you wouldn't do, but let me ask you this question, it's always been a gate up. That's why they sold it, because there wasn't no easement to get through there. I've been down there about forty years.
I don't know if it's something you need much...
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if somebody wanted to come on there, I don't have any problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you've, you've got to give, if this is in your deed, you have to give them access to that.
I haven't had any problem with anybody, if they wanna come, go ahead.
But they do have a road that, when you come into the property, it's a road, side road that goes off, that they can go back.
Okay.
And the road to get to the venue is a single car road, duh.
Is it?
You see it right there? It's, yeah, right there, that's the only entrance for the public, and, you know, you see the house, the neighbor's right there. So there's the driveway, the entrance, whatever you wanna call it.
Did, did we have a set standard for the other venues?
Well, they're roads, and then there are driveways, so remember, no, we didn't, because they have immediate access. Well, actually, what is it, Frog Hollow, you gotta go by the house. No, but again, they, it was all their property surrounding them.
His problem, if he can't get in.
Well, my, my thought is emergency vehicles. What if they have a situation where an emergency vehicle needs to get down there?
Mr. Quiller, what's your plan to widen that driveway?
Let me say this right here, the reason why my nephew's blocking that driveway, because we weren't expecting anybody, normally it does not be blocked.
Yeah, but is there a way to widen it so that we could, two cars could pass each other, emergency vehicle had to get in there?
Yes.
Yeah, you could widen the driveway some.
Right, uh-huh.
Okay.
So, and you would never allow cars to pull in there to block that driveway?
No, ma'am.
You have a designated parking place?
Yeah, we got plenty for it, all that carried out.
But it's designated as to where people are gonna park, so...
Yes, ma'am.
It'd be the whole field, yeah.
Whole field, plenty of, yes.
I do think a minimum requirement of two porta potties for that thing, I mean, you gotta have two bathrooms. And it's already covered in the ordinance that anybody coming down there as an, whether it's a food truck or whatever, would have to have their appropriate licenses to do that.
Yep.
Permits and all licenses. And Mr. Quiller stated it needs to be on the record that he would not provide any alcohol.
On the, the conditions that's, Mr. Courier's listed, is everybody, where you at with those conditions?
I'm good with that, I, I, I mean, they've said that they don't anticipate having more than fifty people, so I'd like to change that to fifty, since we're doing two porta potties.
You said you'd change it to a maximum of fifty, is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm. Because everything else we've done has had...
Bathrooms.
Bathrooms.
Maximum fifty, unless they're gonna put in bathroom, bathroom house?
But they'd have to come back to us for that.
Okay.
No parking along the road? Just to make sure. So, am I correct in saying for the required, the conditions and the staff recommendation changing D to maximum of fifty attendees? Adding no alcohol to be provided by the property owner?
Minimum two porta potty.
And minimum of two porta potties.
Mr. Quiller, are you okay with these conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So do I have a motion? And...
Did we mention widening the driveway for the emergency vehicle?
It needs to be two...
It's not a condition, but it...
It needs to be...
Mr. Quiller's agreed that he would widen the driveway.
Yeah, it needs to be two, the driveway needs to be two cars wide for emergency vehicles.
I take care of that, I got somebody to do that.
So we'll add that as another driveway. Driveway to be... Driveway to be...
It's just gonna be a rented venue, do we need some sound check down there, that, you know, the sound, quiet time stops, you know, amplified stops at 10 o'clock?
You said, if somebody's down there, you're gonna be on site the whole time they're there?
Yeah. We knew you were about walking, just, and we could see the place.
So, if in here, sound, amplified sound is off at 10 o'clock, you can make sure of that?
Yeah, I can make sure of that.
You got anything?
No, I'm good.
Any other? Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve with all conditions A through L, changing D to a maximum of 50 attendees? F, adding no parking along the road? Adding no alcohol to be provided by the owner? Adding the driveway to be widened to two-carly, two-car widths? And a minimum of two porta potties?
I'm making motion. All those conditions.
That's second.
All in favor?
Ma'am, I'm sure clarification, we've got C, which does not allow motorized vehicles, but then you did mention L, which if you have, you allow them, these are the requirements for ATVs, so do you wanna exclude them altogether, or do you wanna include Condition L?
I want to exclude any motorized vehicle other than the owners.
All right, so then we can just keep C the way it is?
Correct.
And we don't need L?
We don't need L, okay.
So we need to reread that?
Do we need to redo that?
We just leave it C, and then it's...
Leaving C and removing L?
Yeah.
All in favor of that?
Yes.
Nanas, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Currier, for the clarification.
Yes.
Mr. Quiller, thank you.
Yep, it'll go to the county commissioners.
Right, again, October 10th, we'll see that, assign, disappear, assign, come back.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is just a recommendation, it's fine to listen to the county commissioners. Thank you.
Thank y'all. Okay, item five, other business, there is none. Item six, planning commissioner issues and announcements.
I don't have any.
Item seven, secretary's issues and announcements.
Just a few updates, tomorrow night is the Board of Commissioners, the CO rezoning will be going before them tomorrow night, and your postponement ordinance will have its second reading, so they anticipate that the postponement order should be approved tomorrow. We'll see what happens with CO. And then the biggest news of the day?
I saw that.
The Fortner case, we have an order from the judge, and the county has won, we were actually sued by another party. Now, we really don't have any comments, you know, where does the county go from here? We still have to have that meeting with staff to determine that outcome, what we'll be doing next, but it was a good outcome for the case, long waited for.
So basically, they, if I read that right, they basically just said that because they stopped paying their occupation tax, they kinda lost that right to...
If it was ever established.
If it was ever...
Mr. Doug, you did a fantastic job of...
That's what I hear. That's what I hear. Paying the big bucks for. All right, you wanna turn us off? Oh, I guess, yeah, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now you're turning us off.